Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pleasure of allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mary Roca.
Ms. Cantillo. Mr. Borton.
Yes, here.
Ms. Picala.
She's just walking in.
Ms. Picala?
Here.
Ms. Woolridge?
Here.
Ms. Gagliori?
Here.
Ms. Caffner?
Here.
Here. The New Jersey Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public for advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, Brick Township Report of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be posted on the Administration Office bulletin board, the official district website, and Channel BTV20, and sent to the Asbury Park Crest, Brick Times, the Star Ledger, and Municipal Clerk's Office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamela. Tonight we're presenting the 1718 budget. And as, let me give you a little bit of background for the people who haven't been here for the last couple of months. The budget process in most districts starts in October and November, when we start handing out information and receiving questions to our program managers and our principals. That information from those different sources, after a lot of walkthroughs and looking around, comes back from them. Beginning in January and February, the Central Office Administration works with each, sits down with each one of those program managers and individuals and principals to go over what they're requesting. We have some, at that time, some cuts are made, some discussions are made about what the needs are. In February, usually I think it's the third Wednesday or third Tuesday after the governor gives his speech, we find out our state funding, which is not really much of a question in recent years because we've been pretty flat. We begin looking at different projects. We start talking about numbers at that point. A lot of our projections are based on information that comes to us late in March. A lot of that has to do with your health benefit numbers, a lot of that has to do with a couple of other things that we get. The later you get in the school year, the better off you are with predicting what you'll need. Remember that we're trying to predict some things that are going to happen 12 months, 13 months, 14 months down the line. So the later you get a year, you get a little bit better information. We had board meetings in March and April where we presented our needs. I mentioned at those points that I thought it was important that we, the community and the board hears the many needs the district has. Our program managers and some principals gave, described the different needs in different buildings, different facility needs, transportation, maintenance, all of those different issues and instructional needs that we talked about, and we had the pleasure of having those people come and talk about those different needs and we presented them. We put a budget together and sent it out after our last board meeting to the board. Now remember, when we put a budget together, this is not only an administrative budget, but we take our direction from the board. Brick Township works in a committee system. We get our direction from the different committees that sit with us and go over, the Finance Committee, the HR Committee, all of those different committees that we talked to. So they were giving us input as this process developed. But I thought it was important that we bring board members in, once we put the final numbers together, to review that and get a final input from them. So for the past week, week and a half, we've sat down with board members that came in in groups of one or two, to go over the numbers, to get their input and suggestions, and some of those numbers changed because of those suggestions. So the budget we're presenting tonight is a culmination of many months' work and input from a lot of people. I'm proud of the budget. I think last year's budget was a tax increase that was higher than we wanted, but it set us up in the future and set up this budget so we can be successful. In this budget, there's no reduction in force. We're expanding programs that we started last year. We're beginning a college academy, and hopefully will culminate in a program where students, when they graduate high school, have an opportunity to complete two years of college at a reduced cost to parents. We're creating, as our special ed audit told us we should, K-12 programs to keep students in district where we feel that we can provide quality programs for them. We're beginning to address some of the weaknesses in the audit, one in particular, and in professional development. We've placed $27,000 increase in this budget to increase special ed, special ed professional development. And we're beginning to address capital projects in this district, which have been long overdue and need to be addressed. As I've said during the process, if we don't address our capital projects and these different problems that we're having, they don't go away. They become more expensive the next time we do them. This budget also is providing, or hopefully be setting up, a plan for the future to address the many capital projects that we can't do in this budget. Because as I said in the last two months, all of our needs won't be met with this budget. But I think it's important to begin looking at a plan to set up how we're going to address those needs in the future. And this budget, as we'll explain when we go over it, does all of those things. We did these things which we believe is a low impact on the taxpayer. Our increase in the tax levy would be about 1.25%, which to the average homeowner in Brick is about $2.50 a month. So I think even with that tax increase, we're getting a lot out of this budget. So let's go over it. I'm not going to read every one of these line items to you. This will be up on the, if passed tonight, this will be up on the website tomorrow. But I want to highlight a few things. And some of those things deal with trying to be conservative and trying to use the staff that we have. We'll be adding a fourth grade section due to enrollment in Drum Point, and we'll be adding a second grade section in Herbertsville. Both of those will be taking, will be filled by realigning our staff that we presently have. We're not asking for new positions in those positions, for those two additional classrooms. On the next slide, Warren Wolf, as you know, is great, is getting a new grade every year as we expand that program. So we'll be adding a third grade section there for the students moving up, and a second grade section for students who are increased enrollment in second grade. And again, we'll be doing that from the staff we have. We're not asking for new teachers. Middle school highlights are there. Let me just highlight, we are, we see a need to build the music program on the Lake Riviera and Brick High School side of town. We would like to equal the program on this side of town, and if you were with us last month, you heard the Brick Memorial Band and the outstanding job that they did, and we want to build that program at Brick High School similar. So you see in here a number of different expenses in the middle school that are going to help us in the middle schools do that. And blinds, we need to start addressing, even though we put new windows, if we want to use some of the media that we want to use in the middle school, we're going to have to start putting in blinds and block out the sun and the light a little bit for those programs. And you see a lot of different things in those programs. High school highlights, as I said earlier, were increasing and adding to the STEM program we started last year. In last year's budget, we said that this year we would need a second teacher for increased enrollment and more course offerings, and that's what we're doing. This year, we shared a teacher between both high schools. Next year, we'll have one high, one teacher in both high schools. The American Sign Language program, which we started last year, was very, has been very popular. We would like to increase a teacher in this budget. Again, rather than share that teacher, put one in each school and offer an American Sign Language too. So students who are taking it can use it for college credit and an entrance to the credit. Since 2009, we were supposed to be offering a dance class in this school district. We haven't done that. We were given a waiver last time we were reviewed, but we will not be given a waiver again. So we would be adding that dance teacher to increase that offering. Students don't have to take dance, but the offering, they need to be offered that opportunity. Again, at Brick High School, you see the marching band uniforms and the different program enhancements with that money there. A number of other different enhancements that we're doing on the next page in high school too. Brick Memorial, this gym, the drop-down curtain doesn't work. We're going to be replacing that. You see the price for that. And the many other different enhancements we're doing for the high schools. Curriculum instruction, there are some heavy hitters here. Read 180 program in particular. The Read 180 program's been around for nine or 10 years. It's done a, it's been in my other districts. It really is an outstanding program. I'm happy that we're able to afford to introduce it in the sixth through eighth grade and hopefully grow that in the future. In technology, we are continuing with our initiative to create a one-on-one technology program. This budget will allow us to complete that and have a one-on-one program at the end of next year, so we're happy about that, to continue the technology in this district. In special services, we'll be adding a behavioralist, which in, when we were, had the special ed audit, was highly recommended, and when we had our interim special ed director come in, he highly recommended that we do that so we can better service our students in district without sending them out of district. And as I said earlier, you'll see the staff program trading of 27,500 increase in those areas that was highly recommended by the interim special ed director and also in the audit. And I think that's an important addition to this budget. Now, Mr. Edwards is going to go over some facility needs, how we're going to address them, and the numbers. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Jellinell. From a central administration standpoint, district-wide things that we're looking at, we've reduced the electricity consumption that we feel we're going to need in 1718 due to solar panel savings. The solar panels are being, were deemed substantially complete at the end of March, set to go online any day now, and we are going to begin achieving savings because of that. We're doing very well with our medical and prescription. If you recall, last year, we went self-insured for medical. A prescription, we've been self-insured for a couple of years, but we, we changed carriers due to rebates. Between those, the medical and the prescription and the dental, we're going to see a decrease in our health benefit costs of $908,000. We are also doing very well with attendance. Both teacher and teacher aides are, have a better attendance than historically we've had, and therefore our need for substitutes is lessened. We're able to reduce our need for substitutes based upon historical data by 254,000. In transportation, as Mr. Wilson pointed out at one of our previous meetings, we're going to need six new vehicles. Five of those vehicles, the 554-passenger buses, we're going to be lease purchasing. There's also, again, talking, we talked, I talked to you about the teacher and teacher aide attendance. There's also a better than, a better attendance for bus drivers, and therefore the need for substitutes in that area has also been driven down. However, unfortunately, we're going to be increasing our costs for gasoline and diesel because of, as you've noticed, the price of the pump has been going up. Our projection on our budget, and we don't pay what you pay at the pump, we'd get a little bit better, but our projection is at $2.25 per gallon, which will lead to about a $52,000 increase for fuel. On the facility side, Mr. Colubus has really taken a lot of initiative into this budget and put in, in a lot of things that we need to bring this district forward. One of the things that he talked about is the need for painting throughout the district. So we have budgeted $50,000 for painting district-wide. We've budgeted another $15,000 to add 10 more split units for either classrooms or offices where either students or staff are in need of them because of medical or IEP issues. As Mr. Colubus talked about at the, at the previous meeting, we have a great need in the district to start replacing some of our equipment for both maintenance, custodial, and grounds. So we've included some money in there for repairs, $8,000 for repairs, but then we've also included money that, as you'll see when we get into a future slide, on replacement of equipment. We've included $10,000 for fencing installation throughout the district due to security reasons, $10,000 for playground repairs that are much needed, and $18,000 for vegetation control, as Mr. Colubus pointed out at a prior meeting, rather, where, you know, currently we have some, some vegetation concerns throughout the district on the outside of the buildings. We're going to be looking to replace the hot water heater at Drum Point Elementary School, purchase a new walk-behind scrubber at Midstream's Elementary School, a new rider auto scrubber at Brick Memorial, a propane floor refiner for the district, district-wide. As Mr. Colubus again spoke about at our previous meeting, the township is moving to a new style of garbage truck, which is requiring us to purchase new dumpsters to accommodate that. We're going to be purchasing two zero-turn riding mowers for the grounds crew that are in need of replacement, and three vehicles, a van and two pickup trucks. We're very happy, though, about the capital projects that we're able to include within this budget. Previous meetings, you've heard us talk about that we are moving ahead with the Warren Wolf roof, the design of that. Well, we're also now including in the budget the replacement of that roof, so we will be doing that this summer. We're also going to be moving ahead with the Veterans Complex Lot Reconfiguration, repaving for safety reasons there. And then, of course, the Brick Township High School Track. So those three projects will be included in this coming budget. We're replacing interior and exterior doors, about $90,000 with the doors at both Brick High School, Brick Memorial, and Veterans Memorial Middle School. We're going to be doing some asphalt and grate repairs here at Brick Memorial where we have some sinkhole issues occurring. And we're going to be redoing the gym floor at Lake Riviera Middle School. At Emma Havens Young, we're going to be taking down the bifold door that is a safety concern right now and installing a drop-down screen in its place. And in technology, we're going to be putting in a dry chemical system for fire prevention where currently the server room that houses all of the district's servers is currently sprinkled with a water system. So if there was ever a fire, we'd have a major concern in there with water, water and servers don't mix well together. Another big thing, however, may not be monetarily, but it's, it's going to be big for us as a board moving forward, is we're budgeting $25,000 for pre-referendum services. In 1718, we will be making the final payment of a five, of a, of a $6 million referendum that was taken out in 1996. The $500,000 payment will be the final one in 1718. And so what we're going to be discussing with the board is moving ahead with a referendum sometime in the late fall of this year, where we could replace that $500,000 payment going forward for potentially a $12 million referendum in future years with zero impact to the taxpayers. The proposed expenditures for this budget amount to $154,421,700. That's made up of the operating budget at $148,33,105. The grants for $3,721,023, and repayment of debt is slightly down by about $12,000 at $2,667,572. The revenue to support that budget, $104,771,941 in tax levy, as Mr. Jellinell said, that's up 1.22%. It's actually 1.25% on the operating budget, and there's a decrease on the debt service budget. State aid, again, has remained relatively flat. It's been seven years in a row now that we have not seen a increase in our state aid to the proportion that we feel is necessary. If you've been following along in the news, we're expecting that we're going to have a decrease in our federal revenue from the, both IDEA and CLB. We're reducing this year the reliance on surplus. Surplus is saving the account. So in the past years, we've been funding some of our budget with our savings account. We're reducing that moving forward. And the, we're going to be using capital reserve utilization for the Brick Township High School Track, the Veterans Lot Reconfiguration, and Warren Wolf Roof. As Mr. Jellinell said, the increase to the average taxpayer in Brick Township will be $30.83 a year, or $2.57 a month. Mr. Jellinell, that's the end of my portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. As you see that, and as I said before, we're pretty happy with how this budget turned out. I thank the administrators and staff for all the work that they did to put this together. As I explained earlier, it's a long process. It's an involved process, and it takes a lot of work. I also like to thank the board members who came in and spent a lot of time in the committee meetings and then individually in the past week and a half to sharpen our pencils and to make sure that we got this budget to a reasonable number and we kept the projects that we thought were important. I think we did both of it. So, Mr. Lamela, that's the budget presentation.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
Stephanie and Daisy.
I did do the, want me to do the first part?
I'm sorry?
The interim superintendent recommends items one through...
Oh.
Four?
Yes.
That was your first and second, right?
Yes.
Any board comments on operations? Seeing none, public comment, we'll open that up. Come on up, sir, please. Come on up. Thank you.
Victor Nelli, Meadow Point Drive. My first question is, don't we get to ask any questions about the budget?
That's what you're doing right now.
That's what this is.
That's what this is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, fine. I got some questions. The budget that you presented to us back on March 7th, and the budget that was in the paper on Saturday were exactly the same. I assumed after your comments about all the changes were going on and everybody was going to not get what they want, there would be a difference in the budget, but they're exactly the same. Why is that?
The budget that we presented in March included a 1.7% increase to the tax rate. The one, the budget we're producing tonight is a 1.22 or 1.25 increase in the tax rate. So I would have to disagree, they are not exactly the same.
Okay, what about the one, the whole-page budget that was put in the paper on Saturday, this past Saturday? I'm assuming that you have an obligation, some kind of rule, that you have to present the budget to the public a certain amount of time before you actually have the budget meeting? Is that correct?
Mr. Edwards, maybe you can help us with this and tell us the timelines.
Yeah, and sure, and Mr. Finelli, if you recall, we've discussed this in the past, that the, the system that the Department of Education uses, I guess, by legislation, is an antiquated system. So on March 7th, we adopted our tentative budget, and that tentative budget, as we said at that meeting, is a working document and most likely would change, which tonight we're presenting the budget, the final budget, and it has changed. However, the Department of Education makes us advertise the tentative budget, which is the one that you saw in the paper, which is not the budget that we told you on March 7th would be the one that would be the final budget. So it's kind of a, a really poor system that the state has set up, that they've established, that you're giving people information that isn't what is going to be presented at the end.
Okay, so you have an obligation to put the budget in the newspaper on Saturday?
Which we did.
But this is not the budget that you're presenting tonight?
That's, it's been changed, correct?
It changed.
Yes.
In fact, it changed, the first notice that we got that it changed was yesterday. You had, you had six weeks from, from the first week in March until Saturday to put this in, and then between Saturday and yesterday, it changed. So what, what happened between Saturday and, and yesterday?
As, as I explained earlier, Mr. Finelli, we met with board members. The last meeting that we had with board members was Tuesday afternoon. We continued to get input through email and phone calls from board members, and we came to a final budget Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday night, that you see, and we present it, put it out in the public Wednesday morning.
Aren't you happy about that, Mr. Finelli?
Excuse me, I'm talking to him.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. You had meetings right up until this Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. What, what was the big change that, that allowed you to change everything?
Well, we didn't change everything. We changed two line items in particular. One was the original budget, purchased five buses outright, which was the original recommendation, and upon, after listening to the board, we're lease purchasing those for a decrease, correct me if I'm wrong, about $350,000? Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, it's about right.
And then we also are changing a program that we outsourced to developing a special ed program in-house for grades nine to 12, which we think will be better, and saved us about $100,000.
Did you happen to main, mention a change in revenue of $2.654 million? Where did that come from? That was not on the, on the March one, or that was not on the Saturday one? That was one that's on the one from yesterday. So somewhere you came up with $2.654 million more in revenue than you had in the paper on Saturday or last, last weekend. But you didn't mention that. Where did that come from?
We're utilizing capital reserve for the fund capital projects.
I can't hear you.
We're utilizing capital reserve to fund capital projects.
It was in, it was in capital reserves?
That's the difference in revenues that you're asking about.
So it's not revenue?
Well, it is. The state deems it revenue because you're pulling, it's in a separate account, you're pulling it out and putting it into your revenue so that it can be spent. Is it, from a, you know, practical standpoint, is it really revenue? No, it's money that's a savings that you've been able to generate that you're going to be spending. But the Department of Education looks at it as revenue.
Okay, based on what was in the paper on Saturday, which I spent a lot of time going over, comparing it to last year, and what was in the, on, on the agenda that, right? And the, and the presentation that you quickly blew through tonight, how do you expect people like myself or other people in the audience to ask intelligent questions when you're changing everything right up till the day before the meeting? And that, and that's all we got, you know, as far as the agenda goes, right there? Because this is not good anymore. Right there, that's all we have. So how do you expect people, I mean, you expect us to go on, on the website tomorrow and then have a chance to study this, and then maybe next month ask the questions? Or is it, you don't want questions?
Mr. Finelli, we're following the system the state lays out. We did spend the last two months going over the needs of the district and took input from the community during that time, and this budget reflects the needs that we outlined for the last two months.
Right up until Tuesday?
Yes, we kept on working it.
But that's terrific for you, but that stinks for the public. Because we have no idea what's going on.
Well, I would strongly disagree with that, Mr. Finelli.
Just ask a question. The sarcasm and things you say at times are inappropriate.
Mr. Finelli, I strongly disagree that we went over for two months things the district needs and received input from the community. If you think that this was done at the last minute, you're absolutely wrong.
I didn't say that. Don't put words in my mouth. I said, whatever you did, the public has no way of knowing what goes on because it all changed from Tuesday.
But it was reduced. It was reduced.
Gloria, let him talk. Easy.
Stop, stop interrupting. Will you please? I'm just, I'm talking to them. Stop talking at me.
You're talking to all of us, and she stood down. Finish your thought.
Right? I don't put words in my mouth. I didn't say you didn't spend the time or anything. What I said is, whatever you did, gave the public absolutely no time to do anything because the latest detailed information we got, and I attended the meetings, I heard the presentations, but the latest detailed, the finished product came on board yesterday. Yesterday. And all we got was those three lines, that's all we got yesterday. We come in the meeting with only that information. You have all the other stuff, granted, you have it all. I don't know when they got it. They got it all, but we don't have it. We don't have that. That's it. Three lines, and they changed from the last time, and they changed from Saturday. So I don't know how many meetings you had from Saturday until Tuesday, because I'm assuming you didn't do it on weekend, on the weekend.
Actually...
Actually, your assumption is wrong. So let's stop with the assumption. Ask a question.
But if you did, you had six weeks to change everything, and it sounds like you changed everything in the last two days.
Thank you.
Okay, what efficiencies were, well, you went over that pretty much. You, you said that the budget was developed by who?
Budget was developed by the administrative staff and the principals and administrators in the district with, with, under the direction of the, of the board.
Okay, and then you met with each one of the board members and they went over it? Could you explain the comments you made about that referendum again and the $25,000 expense that's in there, Mr. Edwards? Because I really didn't understand that.
Yeah, sure. So in 1718, the upcoming year, we have a $500,000 debt service payment that we have to make.
You speaking to the microphone, or I'm going to walk down there?
You can come down here. I don't mind. Come on down.
Speaking to the microphone.
You can't hear either? Is it better? Can you hear? Okay. There you go. So in 1718, we have a debt service payment of $500,000 that is the final payment on a referendum that was done in 1996. Okay? So in 1819, we will no longer need to make that payment. What we would like to do, though, is utilize that payment to do a new referendum. Referendum, a $500,000 payment, just to give you an idea, would give us about $12 million in projects. And so we would like to use that payment to do about $12 million worth of work throughout the district that's much needed, we feel, and have, that would be zero impact to the taxpayers because the payment is going to be the same payment that was already in place.
Back to me.
The 20...
Back in 1996, the voters got to vote on the referendums, correct?
Yes, and the voters will get to vote on this one as well, referendum has to be voted on.
We don't get to vote on this one.
Yeah, yes, you will, yeah, you'll get to vote on it. It'll be in the fall of 2017, we haven't picked a date yet, and the $25,000 that you questioned is pre-referendum services, that we can hire the professionals that are needed to move us in that direction for a referendum. Architectural, financial advisor, bond counsel, all the professionals that you need to hire in order to undertake a referendum.
Okay, so we'll be on the ballot?
There'll be a referendum question either in September or December, like I said, it'll be in the later part of 2017.
Okay, thank you, that's a good answer. I heard mentioned that there was no reduction in workforce, so that means with the new budget, there were no teachers let go, yet I noticed in looking that the span of control from teachers to administrators went from 22.7 to 21.8. And no teachers were reduced, is that an increase in administrators?
No, there's no increase in the administration, and just so you know, our administrative expense out of the 101 districts like Brick is the third lowest, and the comparison that you're looking for, which is the ratio of classroom teachers to the administration, is, we're one of the lowest with that also. So I don't know what your comparison, if it went up or not, but our administrative costs are one of the lowest in the state.
Okay, but that was not my question, my question was--
No, I think your question was, are there any administrators added in the answers? No.
No, if there was no teacher reduction and the span of control went to 22, from 22.7 to 21.8, either the teachers went down or the administrators went up, because something changed that number.
You're looking at last year's numbers, and we did lose 14 positions last year in this, in the budget.
All right, so there was no change. In the budget that was in the newspaper, you estimated an increase of 186 students year over year. I remember giving you a long discussion about demographics and the student enrollment was down for 10 years, and my predictions and everybody else was going to go down another five years before it leveled out, but you're predicting an increase in student enrollment. Could you tell me where that came from?
I believe it came from the demographic report.
That's correct.
Demographic report?
Yes.
Which demographic report was that?
One we had last year.
Last year? Well, last year, your track record wasn't so good either, because you predicted 8,000, 943 students, and you missed by 143. Actually, the enrollment went down last year, it went down the last 10 years, and it's going to go down the next five years, and if you look at it, you're looking at some report that's telling you your enrollment is going to go up, a report that was a year old? Do you personally, or anybody here, sitting here, can tell me anywhere that they think would cause a rise in student enrollment? Looking at your high school graduation, looking at your middle school moving into your high school, and looking at your elementary school moving into your middle schools, every class gets, the high school's bigger than that, so they're all going down. So could you tell me why or where in that demographic report, or whatever reason it was, that you feel you're going to increase student enrollment?
I think it's a prediction, Mr. Finelli, that the demograph, the demographer makes, and what the number you really want to know is about students exiting the district and students coming into the district, it's more than just one class to another.
Okay, so where, and I need you to speak into the microphone too, because when you look at me, you're not speaking into the microphone.
I will try not to look--
Where is the demographic that is going to increase the amount of students coming into the Brick School District?
I don't have the demographic report in front of me, I couldn't answer that question.
You don't what?
I don't have that report in front of me, I can't answer that question.
You can't answer the question, or you don't want to answer the question?
No, see, right there, stop. He answered your question, what's with the negative comment? It's not that he doesn't want to answer your question, he answered it. So stop!
Excuse me?
I am excusing you, you're rude at times and crass, and I'm just asking to behave appropriately. Thank you.
My question was very simple--
And he answered it very simply.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
My question was very simple, where or whatever caused the school district to predict that the enrollment was going to go up, like they did last year, but they were wrong, it went down, and for the last 10 years, it went down, and I predicted it was going to go down for the next five. I asked where or what caused--
And he answered your question.
--the school board or anybody to make that prediction, and he said it was, maybe it was in the demographic report.
No, 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 wait, don't put words in my mouth.
No, no.
What I said is, I don't have the report in front of me, so I can't answer that question, that's what I said.
So, if you'd like to--
So the answer was in the demographic report, which he doesn't have, that's the answer?
Correct, so, if you'd like that information, schedule an appointment, we'll give it to your central office. Thank you.
I also looked on this thing Saturday, and it talked about the capital improvements that the school district has budgeted, and you ran through quite a few of them there, but on this report, which was from Saturday, there was only export repairs, too, for $40,000, and a leach purchase payment of $2,373,000. None of those other things that you talked about were on this report, were they all added from Saturday also?
When we looked at the budget and we decided to use capital reserve, which Mr. Edwards already explained to you, that's where those, that funds came from, to include those other projects. During the last two months, when we outlined our projects, and we passed, last month, I believe, the money to start preparing for this, we were hoping to be able to generate enough money out of capital reserve for those projects. So you're portraying it as a surprise, but it really wasn't a surprise because it's been talked about for the past two months.
This must have been some weekend, I'm telling you.
Thank you.
This must have been some weekend.
You work very hard.
Anyone else from the public? Sir, please.
George Scott, from Brook, New Jersey, I have a couple of questions. At the end of the slides, and Mr. Edwards did comment on this, for capital reserve, that three, it was a little over $3 million, how much do you have on hand in capital reserve? And do you keep a certain amount from year to year?
So two-part question, right? So first, first part of the question is currently, there is, is there zero in capital reserve? So this budget--
Jim, again, it's hard to hear you from--
I don't know why that's, is that better?
Yes.
I want to look at you, not look that way, so I'm sorry. So we currently have zero in capital reserve at this point. It's anticipated, though, that out of the 1617 budget, the one that we're currently operating in, that we're going to generate $3.1 million for capital reserve.
Okay, and where do you generate that money from?
It's a whole, about $154 million budget, so it's a lot of things, you know, it's some money here, some money there, it's breakage in certain salary accounts, so it's a lot of different things, but the total is that we, we're assuming is a little over $3 million that we're going to be able to put into capital reserve from the 1617 school year.
So it's basically, you transferred from other accounts?
Right, monies that don't get spent, so if we have savings in electricity, or savings in gas, those, monies that don't get spent, we'll be putting in the capital reserve. So that was the first part of your question, right? Is that, that's where the money will come from, it's not there, and second part, I think I answered as well, is that, that's where, because you said, how much is there now and where will it come from?
Right. Okay. I also wanted to touch a little on that $25,000 for the pre-referendum. So you're going to expend $25,000, and you attributed the answer to, these are going to be for professionals. Then you stated that you're going to have a vote, either in September or sometime later in the year. It costs money to have elections, so are you going to piggyback this onto an election that's going to happen, or are you going to have a special election?
If I can just--
September is no, you know, no general--
First of all, Mr. Scott, we're proposing this to the board, so the board's decision to move forward with that has yet to be made, this is what our proposition is. We have discussed it with the facilities committee and the individual board members, but that was, we're proposing it, I just want to make that clear, we haven't committed to it, we're proposing it. Second thing is, is that the Department of Education, I believe, Jim, you might have to correct me, there's five dates where you can have an election for a referendum. There's one in September, one in November, one in December, I forget, I think there was one recently in March, I would have to look up exactly when those dates, but there's only five dates you can do it. So the board would have to make that decision when they want to go out for that referendum in one of those five dates. We're proposing doing it before the end of 2017, but that would be a board decision of when they're going to do it.
Okay, so of the five times that you say that it's allowed, is it allowed to be hooked onto a regular election?
One of the dates is the November date, yes.
It is?
Yes.
So as a taxpayer, you know what I'm going to look for, I'm going to look for that, you don't go out and spend extra money, that's for sure. And I hope the board looks at it that way also. Mr. Edwards also, in his explanation, said, well, you're going to look for $12 million in this referendum, approximately $12 million. So do you have those capital projects earmarked specifically, I mean, that you can elaborate on?
Again, that would be a board decision, but when we went through the facilities projections and we talked about all the needs of the district, are you hearing me? Because I'm trying to look at you--
I'm looking at you, you're not as far as--
Okay. What we're trying to do is to address a lot of the needs that we presented when we went over to facilities, but with that being said, there are some needs that we didn't present. One, a lot of it, a lot of it, some of it has to do with security, that I believe, and I think after speaking with our facilities department and the board, that we need to address the entrance of our elementary schools and our middle schools and high schools to make them more secure, with a double door and a double entrance like we have at Midstreams and Warren Wolf, and do a couple of other camera increases and a couple of other things to increase security in those buildings. So it's not just roofwork, boilers, parking lots, I think a large percent of it is going to be security enhancements.
Okay, so I guess after you have this pre-referendum expense, you'll come up with a specific--
Yes, right now, we're just guessing at numbers, you really need architects and engineers to give you a better idea.
Okay. Not to nitpick such a magnitude, a big, a big budget, $100 gallon hot water heater, $6,000 for one, one hot water heater? Really?
I'm not up on $100 gallon hot water heaters.
Not a water heater guy.
I'm going to defer to the gentleman to your right, also wearing a green shirt.
That takes into account everything, maintenance, installation, prevailing wages that you have to pay, you have to charge something to the house, so it's not only the district in itself that it's having to do with--
Okay, it's just a ridiculous number for one hot water heater.
If I may, we don't know what we're going to count when we go into the board room itself, there's going to be piping we have to do, there's going to be issues in the board that we have to look at, so that is a relative number, and it will fall within that.
Okay. Also, in the budget, I didn't see anywhere, and I brought this subject up at the last meeting, you said I would get an answer to the question after a timeframe was met, and it has been met. I don't see anything where we're going to, where you have put in back pay for a previous superintendent. Where are we with that? What is the status? And how are you handling that going forward? Reading the newspapers, there are no charges, there was a special meeting, I thought to mitigate and, you know, he has a contract till next year. The interim superintendent's contract is up in June, so you don't have a lot of time here. What is going on and where is the money?
I'm going to ask Mr. Montenegro to--
I'm still waiting for a process. With regard to the--
I definitely can't hear.
Sorry. With regard to the status of the superintendent employee, based on reading of the newspapers, it appears as though, even from the employee's own private defense counsel, that the prosecutor's office is going forward with regard to that. And we may have an answer by our May meeting, because the resolution that the board adopted was to suspend that employee while the criminal investigation was pending and until further action by the board. So that matter is still, right now, in a bit of a hiatus. With regard to those funds, I can't comment as to whether or not funds have been segregated for the employment.
Okay, well, the board can answer where the funds are, because this is a budget hearing, I mean, is the money allocated? Is it not there? As a taxpayer, I'm just trying to, again, I was at the special meeting of the board when some of these members weren't there, and it wasn't quite the way you just said it was, it was that he was suspended while there was an indictment and charges. As of right now, the way I read it, there are no charges, so the guy has a contract, I'm a taxpayer, I don't want to be paying two superintendent of schools at the same time, and I think it's the board, the board's obligation for the taxpayers to correct the situation now.
Well--
Excuse me, what do you mean by correct the situation?
There are no charges.
Sir, as I, I can tell you how I understand it, here's what I, here's, if I'm wrong, correct.
I will.
The AP, Assistant Prosecutor, prosecutor has a timeline. Once the initial incident happened where they said there were no charges, the prosecutor has, a 60-day window, is it?
Forty-five.
Forty-five day window to decide if he's going to proceed in a different direction with this, so--
That was for the appeal, and those 45 days are up.
I haven't heard anything about the prosecutor's decision, so that's what I was, that's what--
Mr. Montenegro shaking his head, that the 45 days are up.
Correct, I was waiting to hear if there was a disposition or what direction we were going in.
Forty-five, yeah, the 45-day appeal period has recently expired.
Correct.
But based upon information that apparently came directly from the employee's own attorney and correspondence that he received from the prosecutor's office, apparently the prosecutor's going forward, according to that information. The board will review that. The resolution, and we can provide a copy for it, back when he was suspended, indicated until further action of the board.
With all due respect, you're presuming that that might happen, it hasn't happened. As of right now, there is nothing, as far as I know, against the previous superintendent, who has a contract, who has to get paid. The previous attorney for the board, when they had the special meeting, said, once he was indicted, he had to be suspended without pay. That has gone, that has dissipated. So now, technically, we're paying two people for the same position. I don't think that's fair to taxpayers, plain and simple, and I think the board should really have a special meeting, move on it, because you are, and again, we're here always talking about money. $6,000, I question, imagine how I feel about $175,000 plus benefits to two people for the same job? That's ludicrous. I think it is the board's obligation to move forward, or at least explain to us, not on a presumption that the prosecutor might do this, or might do that, it might snow in July--
I believe Mr. Montenegro just said, hopefully by the May meeting, you'll have a better vision of this. So that's a few short weeks away. In terms of continuity to district and taxpayers, here's what my focus is right now, the running of this district and the children who get the education. So I want to wait until I have a definitive answer from the prosecutor, from his attorneys in terms of what's going on, before we sit and make a decision. Once we have that, we'll move forward. Right now, I have competent leadership guiding this district, and I don't want to break that, it could be broken, re-broken, broken, re-broken, and this is my layman's interpretation of this, so I'm sorry if I'm going off script for anyone. So once I have a clearer vision of what the prosecutor's doing, what his attorneys have said to him, then we'll sit as a group and make a decision. We are not ready to do that, this is our interim superintendent, and we're going to keep it in the balance until we get more information. We hope to have that by the May, hopefully May, if not, at May, we'll be able to provide a better update, because I'm going to ask Mr. Montenegro to get that tonight. But right now, we are not prepared to move forward, we are not starting having a special meeting, we're going to focus on the stewardship of the district until we hear something very clear from his attorney, from the prosecutor's office, and then we'll decide of a direction to move in. in. I believe that's a good course of action for this board.
So your answer, what you just stated now, is that you're going to seek an answer from previous superintendent's attorney? Is that the way I understand it?
I'm going to ask Mr. Montenegro to look into this in whatever fashion he needs to do from a legal answer, to get clarification as to where we are for the next meeting, and have an update then. That's what I'm asking for.
Well, that's what I asked at the last meeting, and I was told once the 45-day appeal time was over, we would have an answer. It's over, and I'm still waiting for the answer.
Well, I apologize. I wasn't here, and I just gave you an answer. I regret it's not the answer you want to hear. My answer tonight is that we're going to continue to look into it. We're going to study the course that we are on now, and hopefully we'll have more information for May 11th.
By the next meeting?
Hopefully, yes. And it might not be the answer you want, but it'll be an update.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
No, see if anybody else.
Is there any other- any other public person that has questions? Okay. You want to come up first? Let him go first. Please. Thank you. You're welcome.
John Sluka, 950 Sylvia Court. I had a question because I was trying to follow this, and it was really fast tonight. The initial ones, I think, were slower. But when it comes to this gasoline tax, or whatever it is, to pay for those buses, we have to pay tax, we have to pay for gasoline. Do we pay the taxes, the state tax on that?
Jim?
I'm not sure that I followed the question.
I know, Lord. When I get a- when I go for gas, and it was $2 back in- two months ago, and then the state raised the taxes 23 cents, it's now $2.23. For every gallon that we use on our buses, do we now pay the extra 23 cents?
Oh, no. Okay, now I follow you. No, we're tax exempt.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Boards of Education are tax exempt entities.
But then I don't quite understand the 225.
That's our projection for 1718.
I hope you're wrong, because if that's going to kill my budget.
Yeah, it's- I hope I'm wrong with that as well, but-
You're taking the state taxes out of it and getting 225? That's a lot of money. You know, because no way you could be paying anywhere over $2 now without state taxes.
We're currently paying 208.
208?
208 without taxes.
You better go to the Wawa and get cheaper gas.
I don't think you can get it at Wawa cheaper.
If you could take it off the tax, you would. That's about 40 cents in taxes. Okay. The other thing is, our total debt outstanding is- what were you saying? Is this the end of it now? That we're paying tax, we're paying something on our debt this year?
Right.
Is that the end of the payments?
Well, it's the end of the 1996 referendum.
How much outstanding do we have as a school district?
Roughly $20 million.
$20 million?
Total, yes.
Another thing, again, we've got to keep paying interest on that also. I know that drives everybody nuts because of saying somehow along the way, we borrow an awful lot of money between the county, city, and the Board of Ed in order to fund something. And now we're paying it all back, and it's costing the children who are now around more money. Okay, that's all I wanted to know for now, because I think you said the other one about the capital reserve being zero?
Correct.
Yeah, and it's going to obviously stay that way if you take money out of it once you put it in.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else in the public? Come on up, sir.
Two things. I hope this board would never consider having a special election to vote on a referendum. Several years ago, 99% of the school districts changed school board elections to have them run with the general elections. Number one, you get more of the people responding and out there. And number two, I think the cost saving was about $97,000. The schools are not falling down. There's no reason to have a special election. And if you can't get things done in time to have them on the regular November election, then wait till next year to do them. You're already spending $25,000, and then you're going to add the cost of $97,000? That's ridiculous to even think about it. The second thing, I understand you weren't here last meeting, okay? But the attorney was here last meeting, the interim superintendent was here last meeting, the vice president was here last meeting, ran the meeting, right? And we were all told the same thing. And if you'd heard my frustration before about not getting information on time, we were clearly told that we were going to do no action until the 45 days for the appeal. And that appeal, so everybody understands it, was for the district attorney to appeal the judge's decision to throw the case out. Had nothing to do with redoing the charges. That was only an appeal because we want to go after the judge because she did the wrong thing. Well, obviously she didn't do the wrong thing because they didn't decide to appeal it. Now, the next process is, and I think you stated it, that when their superintendent is indicted by the grand jury, then you don't pay him anymore. Until that time happens, he's entitled to pay. Whether he's going to get it or not, I don't even want to discuss. He's entitled to it. Now, you're waiting for action on the grand- on the attorney-
Prosecutor?
Prosecutor. He can't do anything until he gets it past the grand jury, right? So he can take it this month, next month, the month after, as long as he wants to build his case to do that. And until he gets it past the grand jury, there is no indictment. So you're paying, or at least rolling up the ledger for the existing superintendent. So we're all paying. But think about our frustration. Last meeting, it was, you weren't here, so maybe you're the one holding it up. I don't know. We're not going to do anything until the 45 days. Well, the 45 days is up, and what are we here now?
Again-
Or maybe next meeting?
Again, I will, again, you look, maybe I delayed it. Here's what I can tell you. Ultimately, it's my responsibility. So, like I said, it falls squarely on me. Let me be clear, it falls squarely on me sitting up here. I accept full responsibility. That said, I will have a better answer on May 11th. It might not be the one you want. I apologize for the delay. It falls on me.
Well, see, that's the problem, right?
That's the problem? Why is that a problem?
Problem is-
Because I owned up to it and said I was busy focusing on something else? So what's the problem?
The problem is not that you might have a better answer. The problem is we have to wait another month-
Correct.
-for the answer, right? And I'm sure you understand, as I do, that things get done here, whether you're here or not, right? Whether you're in that seat, things get done. Everything that was approved last meeting got done. You didn't have to be here to approve it. So the board each has their own fiduciary responsibility to do that.
Okay.
I have one last question, and this is my favorite question about budgeting every year.
Go ahead.
Does anybody on the school board know what the actual cost per student is in Brick School District?
According to the tax-
Does anybody, excuse me, does anybody on the school board have an idea of what-
I'm a de facto member of the school board. The total spending per pupil for the 15, 16-year, and that's the last number to come out, is $18,047. That's the number you're looking for.
Okay. $18,000. We never get that. Thank you.
It's right on the Department of Education website.
However, I'll disagree with you on what you just said. You are not a voting member of the school board.
Didn't say I was. Said I'm a de facto member of the board, as per statute.
He didn't say he was a voting member. He said he was a de facto member as per statute, so-
Could you speak a little louder?
He didn't say he's a voting member. He said he was a de facto member as per statute.
Okay. What I'm interested in, just so you know, when I come here and all the questions I have and everything else-
Yep.
My questions are basically for the school board members because they are the ones that are approving this, all right? So whether he knows the answer or not is not important to me. It's whether they know the answer or not, because they're the ones that are voting on it and approving it. I'll assume he knows the answer because he put the thing together. I want them to know the answer, because we never see that number, right? We see the $14,000 and change that you put in the paper on Saturday, the comparative number. Nobody ever sees that $18,000 number unless you go digging for it. No, that's what it is. It's not $14,000. I want them to understand that. It's $18,000. It's $4,000 more than you publish in the paper.
The comparative number, Mr. Finelli, as you know-
I know what the comparative number is, sir.
Do you know what makes it up and why they have it? I didn't think so.
I know what it is.
Hold on. Mr. Superintendent, hold on.
I know what it is.
Tom, can you explain?
What I also know is it's not the actual number, right? It's not what we spend in Brick. I don't care what they spend anywhere else. Everybody else isn't getting a tax increase this year.
No, they're not. Some are.
Most are.
Most are. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you. Sir, please.
John Hefanis, 65 Byron Road. That $18,047 figure was in last week's Brick Patch. We are in the lowest, I think, 20% of costs for the entire state. That doesn't mean we're in the lowest 20% for quality. I don't think that's true. And the 80% above us have districts that are substantially smaller than we have. So from my perspective, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Wow. Seeing no one else? Mary?
Mr. Borden?
Yes, to all.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. Walrep?
Yes.
Ms. Gagliori?
Yes.
Ms. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Lamella?
Yes. One more time, is there any more public comment?
On any topic.
On any topic? Sir, please.
Gee, twice in one night, your cup runneth over. I'll give you a brief report on Green Fair since the board was so supportive of the Green Team in getting this done this year. In 2016, we had about 70 combined profit, not-for-profit, and only one school. Our attendance last year was about 505 people. This year, we had a reduction because we were competing with our friends next door at Point Pleasant Beach, who have a beer garden. So we lost some of our vendors because they had to make another choice. And also, some of the organizations that come, like Barnacle Bay, had beach sweeps going on. So we had a reduction in total tables of about 20. However, we had 11 schools. 11 schools. Our attendance this year was 810. So I want to thank the board for their support, both individually and in general. Save the date next year. It'll be either the Saturday before Earth Day, which is next year on Sunday, April 22nd. Either it will be the previous Saturday or the Saturday right before Earth Day. When the Green Team has this meeting next month, we'll sort that out. So I'll be knocking on your door about February with a update and making my official request for setting aside the Brick Township High School gym next year for our work. So thanks again for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hefanis, thank you for all the work you do on that. Let me just point out, you know, really the work on the school district, besides the, in each individual school, Mr. Filippone helped the school district put that all together, and I would like to thank him for the work he did.
Yeah, I think, yes. Thank you. The school Green Teams have been a tremendous asset, and I think it's going to get better. Mr. Filippone and I worked on this in like December, November?
Yes.
So it's a very short timeframe. Next year, now you have a whole year to work on it. So I think there'll be more schools and better projects, and the kids are great. They're so enthusiastic. It makes the day. Thanks again.
Thank you. Please. Come on up, sir. I'm sorry?
You're on other now?
Yes, sir. We're on other.
Under professional services, you answered one of my questions, $25,000 already. I just had one other question. Nine from the bottom. $8,000 to dispose of 400 TVs. Could you tell me what that is?
I think it's pretty self-evident. We're disposing old TVs, the tube TVs, that we have to get rid of, and it costs money to get rid of them.
You can't put them up for sale or anything like that?
I think we have done that. Mr. Edwards, maybe you can help us answer that?
Yeah, and we sometimes will get bidders to, but they're- sorry, I just put Mentos in my mouth, and I was about to choke on it. I was trying to swallow it as fast as I could. I wasn't really ready to be called on. Sorry about that. So yes, we have put the tube TVs out on what's called Gov Doc, I'm sorry, Gov Deals, which is where people can bid on things. We have not gotten bidders on them. Nobody wants tube TVs anymore. I actually have two in my house, if you're interested. I'm going to get rid of them as well. And as you know, you have to recycle them. You can't just throw them in the trash. They've got to be recycled. So the fee that Mr. Baio has put into his budget is for recycling of those tube TVs.
Who gets the 20 bucks?
Who gets the 20 bucks?
Yeah, who do you pay the fee to? If you can't recycle them, who do you pay the-
We paid a company to come take them. They recycle them.
Some company comes and-
Yeah.
And take them away?
They take them away and recycle them.
Okay. Under travel, I had one question, and I didn't write down the line item, but maybe you can look on yours and find it. You have one area there where you budgeted $60,000 in this year for travel, and you only used $27,000 of it, with two months to go in the year. You budgeted 60, and you only used 27. This year, you're budgeting $87,000, or a $60,000 increase over what you actually spent this year. And I was wondering why the big increase in that one travel budget?
You're talking about travel?
Oh, yeah. Where the things where you have travel. Question number two, you had travel listed in there.
Yeah.
And I don't have the backup document, but that caught my eye that, you know, you used $27,000 out of the 60, with two months left to go, yet you're budgeting $87,000 in there.
Yeah, so the biggest increase in travel is, as Mr. Jalen talked about earlier, is the child study team travel, not travel, but training, rather. There's-
Training. Oh, I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven thousand being put into child study team training.
Well, special ed in general. One of the things that our interim special ed director and the special ed audit pointed out is that we need to upgrade our training for our employees in the special ed area. And that's one of the things I mentioned that we have done in this budget, is to provide more fund for professional development, training for those people.
You mentioned redistricting earlier in the meeting. Is that redistricting done based on what I saw there? That's all the redistricting?
I don't think I mentioned redistricting. And what I said is that we are going to be using some teachers more effectively and moving them from school to school. If your question is on redistricting, on May 11th, we've had input from the community, input from the PTAs and the schools, and we'll be presenting a small redistricting plan on May 11th at that meeting for a board vote.
A small redistricting plan is going to be presented on May 11th?
Yes.
Okay. So is it safe to assume that you're not redistricting the whole district, just one little place?
No. What the proposal is, and I'm not going to preempt the proposal itself, I think in total, there's about 60 students involved. Don't quote me on that number, but that's a ballpark.
All right. I just, from what I heard, we had a much bigger imbalance, and I- this is rumor, so I don't know. I don't attend redistricting meetings. But what I understood from the last demographic report that we had before you guys all got here, that we had to do some redistricting because things were out of balance. So it looks like we're not going to be doing a big red-
Well, I think a couple of things, Mr. Finelli, have changed since then. Number one, Warren Wolf has now become an elementary school, and on one side of the town, that's offsetting some of the issues that we were having in that half of the town. And what we're recommending on May 11th would hopefully address some of the issues on the other side of town. I don't think it's a complete, that's the last thing we're going to have to do for a while, but I do think it's the wiser thing, since redistricting is a change for kids, and it's upsetting the parents and kids sometimes. I think we want to take this at small bites rather than a large one.
These redistricting meetings that you had, were they open to the public?
Absolutely.
And how was that information given out? Because-
It was, may I, Mr.?
Certainly, Mr. Filippone.
It was, we utilized the Honeywell system as well as the individual schools. We had meetings with the PTAs from Midstreams, Herbertsville, Vets Elementary. And we also had last week, this past Monday, we had a, for anybody in the district who was interested in attending. You would not have gotten, because we only send those things out to parents.
Oh, so you think I'm not interested?
I didn't say that. I just said that's why you wouldn't have gotten notified. But we did mention it at, we did say that we were going to have the April 24th meeting at the last board meeting. So we-
I would be interested in anything that would either cost the district more money or save the district money, you know, as if you're changing things around.
It's cost neutral in most respects. It doesn't save- I think it's fairly cost, it's cost neutral in, in most respects. It doesn't save or cost us a lot. It just changes the, um, uh, the overcrowding in some of our schools.
And were the parents in favor of this?
Uh, we had, we had a tremendous amount of parent input. Um, we took their input to heart, and, um, the final plan will reflect some of what they thought, yes.
Didn't answer my question. Were they, in general, were the parents in favor of this?
It's all according to which parents, you know, that there were, I would say the majority of parents were in favor, yes.
Okay. That was a big change from the last time we tried to do it.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Nick Cusinelli, one-one-three, Dutch Lane. Um, I was at the redistricting meeting. And, um, a couple of things that I've taken from, first of all, thanks for doing that meeting. It was, I thought it was great. Both of you did a great job.
Appreciate it.
Um, the, um, one thing that I was a little concerned was, the redistricting has been going on already, from what I, uh, gleaned from that presentation.
Well, I, I wouldn't call, it wasn't there, I wouldn't call it redistricting. Uh, what happened was, we had a, um, very, very large class sizes at Vets Elementary in first and, or kindergarten and third grade. My lab partner always helps me.
Uh-huh.
And over the last three or four months, since, since around January, we've been diverting new registrations that came into the district to those buildings because there was room in both of those grade levels at both Herbertsville, uh, at Herbertsville School, so, and Midstream School. So we've been moving those folks there so that we didn't overwhelm Vets because their number.
You didn't move anybody. You, anybody that was new that came in.
It was only new, only new people, yes.
Right. So I did, I didn't want to, you know, have it go wrong that way.
No.
So the only thing is, did the board members know that you guys were doing that?
Yes. The, uh, yes.
I did, sir, yes.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Cusinelli, there's a grade limit for kindergarten. You can't have more than twenty-five without a, without a para. We were reaching that twenty-five number, so we had to decide either we were going to change the school for kindergartners coming in or hire paras in those classrooms. So that forced us to make that kindergarten choice.
I'm okay with the, what you got?
No, I'm just saying. So, and it was only new, like Mr. Filippone said, new people, and we did inform the board, yes.
Right. So, but I think that maybe if the public was aware of that at the time you did it then, it might have alleviated some of the, um, I don't know what, the, the parents were a little upset with that going on already without knowing it was going on. So that was the one thing. The other question that was asked during that, uh, presentation, and it was asked more than once, was whether or not the EEC could be used for students. And you were going to find out that answer. I think it's a good time to ask that now to see if that, you guys have an answer on that yet.
Mr. Gene Elling, do you want to take that one or? Well, as Mr. Finelli put, pointed out, that we've had a declining enrollment. It's really not a total enrollment, it's not a total need of classrooms. It's just a reshifting. To reopen the EEC, I'm talking about, I would guess that's going to cost us some money to furnish it, put new teachers in there and those types of things that I would think would be cost prohibitive. Uh, there is also some issues with the EEC. Last time kids were there, I don't know those issues, and I don't know if they were totally, um, fixed. So we would have to, there would be a cost relationship for that that I'm not sure we had even explored yet.
Okay. So we don't know if we can use that for a, uh, an education area at this time?
At this time, yes.
Okay. Cause I, I think Mr. Campbell had asked that last meeting as well, and I understand you weren't there. Uh, but, um, we were looking for that, you know, that answer last month too, so.
I mean, i- if we were looking that we needed to add six or seven classrooms, I think that might be a little, something that we would look at rather than building another school, because you have a couple of classrooms there. But we're not looking to add classrooms. We're looking to redistribute the, the students.
Understood, understood. I just, if you have a building that was originally built for students, and now it's being used for administration, and some of the money that was used to build that was for, um, students, you know, you have a little bit of an issue there. So some of the money was used for ref, through referendum and things of that nature for student use, and now it's no longer being used for students. So we have a, a pretty decent issue there. So, and the reason why you can't hear anything from here is because the speakers are there, and they don't come this way. So maybe you want to move the podium that way, and you would hear a little bit better. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And just so we all know, next meeting on May eleventh is at Brick High School. We're back at Brick High School.
Yep. All right. Seeing no one else. Board comment, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, President Lamela. Um, I don't want to hang any dirty laundry out there, but I do want everybody to know and understand that this process of putting together a budget and having everybody at this level look at that budget and not come to conflict and somehow or confrontational with each other is probably impossible. Uh, it's been hidden probably from you to this point. Myself, I looked at coming in and starting a budget at two percent, so when I didn't see the two percent right off the beginning, um, I was a little shocked by that. I do want to thank President Lamela for steering me personally, contacting people. Uh, not steering me, not steering me, um, but instead assuring me of the stability that the board has with everybody right now. We are able to argue and, and have healthy discussions and come to some sort of realization as to, um, what is possible to do and what's not possible. It's not viable to go out and, and complete everything that has to be done all at the same time. Um, of course, we need to have upgrades still on, on top of, uh, what we're doing with this budget. And I think also, we're looking at not just facilities, which is where I'm at, but, um, education of our families' children. The finance committee also spends hours, so thank you to those people for examining the budget and continuing to get the increases. It is an increase. We, I personally understand it is an increase to the budget, but to get it to the point that it was tonight, we, I thank them for looking as closely as they did and coming up with, uh, ways to do that, that I could agree with. Um, anything else that I have here? The, the big thing for me tonight is that the increase that we have, even though it was reduced at the last minute, did not take anything away from, uh, any of the programs that we're putting in place. Um, the people that presented, our administrators and leaders, thank you for the presentations that we see. Uh, awesome job. It shows where we're at and what we have to look at for the future. And, um, I guess for me, it came down to, can we afford to do more or can we go so fast and, and go fast through things and not do them right? And we want to do things correctly, and nowhere in the budget did anybody hear, and you should listen for this too, nobody's going to stand at the microphone and say, "I put together a program," or "I put together a project, and my future vision is for," it's not me, it's not I, it's the community speaking with us, looking at what we're having in the schools and what the schools need to, to help the students achieve their highest. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Victoria?
Me, all right?
Yes, you're ready.
I'm so excited. I got to tell you, um, contrary to what some members of the public might think, I had sleepless nights over this budget. I, I crunched numbers. I looked at every line item. I worked with my fellow board members. I sat down on Tuesday afternoon at four o'clock with our superintendent and let him know exactly, um, what my concerns were. And I was glad to see the original budget numbers reduced. I'm so glad it didn't look like it did, uh, when we first presented it or even in the newspaper on Saturday. That being said, oh my God, the Green Fair. Mr. Hyfantis, I have to tell you, I'm a loyal member of the community who attends that Green Fair, and I actually went with paper and pencil this year. I'm ashamed to say I don't have it with me tonight, but I talked to the kids from the STEM Academy at Brick Township High School, and they had their little T-shirts on that are embroidered, and they spoke to me about the recycling program they started in, uh, Brick Township High School. And the Mustangs also very excited, those STEM kids, about the recycling program they put in there. And the middle schools, my goodness, those kids are so excited about a sustainable, recycling, ecological program. They turnkey it and they bring it into the elementary schools. And one of the nicest things I heard any of our educators say on Saturday was that, he, he was a middle school teacher, and I was asking him about, not so much recruiting for our STEM program, but the interest that he might see in the middle school for the STEM program. And he said he spends a lot of time talking to young ladies about pursuing their interests in the STEM subjects. And I just think that we have educators so dedicated in this district to sustainable New Jersey, to sustainable schools, to, um, encouraging our young women and men to pursue careers that are going to be so important in the future. And as an aside, I'd like to say, I may not look it. I'm a lot older than my fellow board members, and I happen to remember the very first Earth Day. I was in second grade. My teacher was Mrs. Bowman, and we had an ecology flag. Ecology was a new word in those days. Recycling and, uh, smaller carbon footprint to an eight-year-old in second grade meant my mother packing my lunch in wax paper and not past plastic bags and different things like that. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Hyfantis. Uh, what the school this, and the town is doing is incredible, and I was very proud to be a board member when I went to that Green Fair on Saturday.
Can I respond to that? Sir, please. We will allow a response tonight.
Appreciate you.
Hey, you're being positive. You can get four strikes.
I think it's important to ask this question. Of all the adults in this room, how many can stand up and say we've been good stewardship to the earth?
Stewardship.
Adults, good stewardship?
Mr. Hyfantis, I use cloth diapers on my children.
I mean, we, we are in a position here, I think. We have to pass the baton to the students who are inheriting what we've given them, which, all truth be told, isn't the best ecological scenario we could have thought about. So it's a good move to get the students involved because they're going to have to do the work and make the decisions, and with better information than we ever had sitting around this room, to make the ecology better, recycling better. And in, in general, they're going to have to live in a world that we have given them, and they're going to do a lot better job than we have, I hope. And I think that's true from what, from this board has done to promote that. Hooray for Brick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello. Good evening. Um, I just want to take this opportunity to thank my fellow board members for all of their time. They, um, took to review and look over the budget. I know it's speaking, uh, to them that this was not something that we took lightly. We took it to heart. And speaking to everyone, the students were our central focus. So I want to thank you all for your dedication to our children. I would like to thank the administration team for meeting with me. I met with them on Friday. They reviewed my questions, concerns, answered things, and I want to thank you for your time and all your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy?
Okay. Good evening. Um, I'd also like to thank the school administrators, the staff, um, and the board members that have worked on this budget tirelessly for many months. Um, I'd also like to thank the school staff and administrators for their presentations at the past few board meetings. I think it was really an eye-opener for many people. Um, and as was previously stated, we can't do it all in one year, but oh, how I wish we could though. But I think some great projects, improvements, and purchases happened this past year, and I think this coming year, we are going to be able to continue making our schools great. I too met with, um, the administrators on Friday evening, so I thank them for giving up their time and addressing all of my questions and concerns as well. Um, I'd like to thank them, as well as all of our school staff, for all that they do every single day for our children. So thank you very much.
All right. Awesome. Stephanie? I saw the shoes. I thought you'd run. I was wrong.
You thought I'd run?
Yes, I was.
You put these on and you run.
That's my point. I was wrong.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to thank all the fellow board members for dealing with, um, each other and working so hard to try to, um, come to an agreement on the, on the budget. We, we really did put a lot of hours in it, Mr. Finelli, whether you believe that or not. Um, we spent a long time and a lot of time looking at this, going page by page, um, and a lot of hours over the weekend too. Um, it was, uh, a lot went into this. So, um, and we're very happy that we were able to get it down without losing any of our programs or, um, having to take out any of the much-needed construction renovations and different things that the different schools need. And, um, so, you know, not to keep repeating what everybody's saying, but, uh, so we're, we're happy with the outcome. Um, and I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on it.
Thank you. My turn. Um, I could beat this to death, to death with thanking everyone, but thank you. The principals, the administrators are here tonight that, I know all came voluntarily, Mr. Jelenella, as per your list serve. And, um, I appreciate the effort you put in. I thank the members of this community for their support. This board did work tirelessly as a team, and I, and I am happy where we're at. I apologize to Stephanie for coming to your house after doing my garden. You're still probably trying to fumigate that. To Mr. Hyfantis, I hope I pronounced it correctly. Uh, we start our own aquaponics at home. For those of you who are my age, it's not what you think. It's an herb garden. So, it, it's just to let you know that when you talk about some of the things we do at our age, being a little older, um, thank you for all that you do. I do appreciate it. Mr. Filippone, awesome man. Thank you so much. And that doesn't happen at the principal of those, in those buildings, the supervisors, the kids, and the parents who take the time to drive them out and schlepp them around and get everything done. I believe this budget is competitive, and it's not competitive in the word taxes. It's competitive in the word students. If we want this district to move forward, we have to invest money in the right places, and that's what this district does. We're looking at safety issues coming up. We have some roofs that are leaking like a sieve. We have things that have been neglected. So it's time. It's time to put a, a plan in place to make them better. But more importantly, Sue Mack's been working hard to put a plan to make our students better. And again, it trickles down with every stakeholder. So I believe we are competitive with these numbers. I want to see STEM grow to every kid, not just AP and honors, to be appreciative of where we need to be. And I want to see these teachers buy in the way they are, and the community members. So yes, I'm concerned about taxes. This is fair. It's equitable. We argued. Um, we were, I was rude at times. I apologize. Um, and I want to thank Jim and Tom for their time, because, uh, getting calls from me on Saturday and Sunday, thank you, Stephanie, making me call, I'm sure they loved this weekend. So again, I want to thank everyone. I, I really do. Um, with that in mind, next meeting is May eleventh at Brick Township High School, not here. And I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Stephanie is the first.
Second.
Victoria is the second. Mary?
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Bacala?
Yes.
Ms. Woolruff?
Yes.
Ms. Gagliori?
Yes.
Ms. Hapner?
Yes.
Ms. Lamela?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.